Good evening on this May 20th, 2014. We welcome the audience and the members of out there to our school board meeting. This is one of the fun months for us. We have both our principals here. Principals here. We're looking forward to a commencement season and kind of bittersweet. You see some of our great people move on. We welcome you all here. I'm gonna ask our clerk, Mr. Sligapunko, to read the role. I think the screen got smaller.
Thank you Chair Murneke. Member Harla.
Here.
Member Johnston is absent. Member Loeffler Kemp.
Here.
Chair Murneke.
Here.
I am here. Member Walty.
Here.
Member Westholm.
Here.
Superintendent Gronseth.
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Crawford. Deputy Clerk Hansen.
Here.
Secretary Thiebel.
Here.
And student representatives, Student Representative Manning. Student Representative Trimble. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Members Sligapunko. I ask the audience and members, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Member Sligapunko, seconded by Member Harla. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda passes. Reading of the minutes. Regular school board meeting, April 22nd, 2014. Motion to approve. So moved by Member Westholm.
Second.
Seconded by Member Loeffler Kemp. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Special school board meeting, May 6th, 2014. Is there a motion to approve? So moved by Member Westholm.
Second.
Seconded by Member Harla. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Lastly, special school board meeting, May 13th, 2014. Is there a motion to approve? So moved by Member Westholm. Seconded by Member Loeffler Kemp. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. We now go to one of our more enjoyable parts of our board meetings, school and community recognition. And I turn the microphone over to Assistant Superintendent Crawford. And if the members will come forward, please. Oops, wait, wait. Let's see why isn't... Okay.
Members of the board, this month, I'm pleased to present Eric Thiebel for recognition. Eric recently participated in the 2014 Minnesota State High School League State Speech Tournament. He completed in the category of discussion and took first place. Because Eric won in his category at state, he also received the Wells Fargo Spotlight on the Arts Award of Excellence. Our congratulations to Eric for this outstanding accomplishment. As you know, Eric served as one of our student's school board representatives. In that role, he spent time learning more about how our school district operates and how decisions are made, sharing information with his peers, and bringing a thoughtful student perspective on our meetings. At this time, I would like to invite Kurt Snyder-Wendt, Executive Director of the Minnesota School Board Association, and other state school board representatives to come up for a very special presentation.
Hi, thank you. Hello, I'm Walt Halter, we're in the South East District and the Minnesota School Boards Association President. And I, with your district representative, Tim Riordan, are here to name Duluth High School student Eric Thiebel as recipient of the Minnesota School Boards Association Student School Board Member Scholarship. The $3,000 scholarship is one of only two in the state and has given a way to reward and encourage students to become involved in the governance of their school and learn about the importance of having locally elected school board members. School boards are there to help students. That is why board members run for office, why they put in all that time and effort into being on the board. There is no better way to get input as a board member than getting it directly from a student board member. About 85 of the 337 public schools districts in Minnesota have a student's school board member at the table. Congratulations.
Hi, my name is Tim Riordan. I'm District 11 Director for 32 districts in northeastern Minnesota. A committee of five of us school board members selected two winners out of 37 applications this year. And let me tell you, it was a tough choice. All of these high achieving students, Eric stood out, of course, from all the rest. We judged him because of his extracurricular activities and a long list of community service. He gave back to the community by volunteering and all the way, all the time, holding down a part-time and summertime jobs. Eric also understands the role of a board member. He dedicates time to mentoring other students and formed a student group that helped advocate for your district referendum last year. Eric is a wonderful example of what student board members can do, and I'm so pleased to be part of this presentation here tonight. Congratulations, Eric.
Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Lori Napp, and I'm principal at East High School. And I wanted to take a moment to thank Eric on behalf of the staff and students of East High School for his leadership, his time commitment, his willingness to represent his school and peers on the school board by stepping up to voice his opinion and those of his constituents on issues that impact the students at East as well as students across the district. I also want to acknowledge his parents, who have set a wonderful example through their civic engagement by participating in the district's Think Kids meetings, East TSA meetings, and Kathleen's four years of volunteering in the East Career Center. You are amazing role models for your children. Congratulations, Eric, on your award this evening. We're very proud of you.
And Eric, you will not be able to cash that check at a drive-through. Thank you. Without objection, I'd like the superintendent to say a few words, answer a few questions.
Over the weekend, readers of the Duluth News Tribune saw a couple of items geared toward discussion of ISD 709 curriculum. And one story outlined how nearly two decades of budget cuts have impacted music programs. The other, a column in the opinion page, dealt with preliminary class schedules at Denfeld High School. And I believe many other people are here tonight for the same reason. So I wanted to speak to that just a little bit tonight. There are two pieces of information I'd like to share. First, in regards to both Denfeld and East High School class schedules, staffing decisions are still in process and have not been finalized. I can tell you that Denfeld will be offering Spanish 5 next year. In part because of the additional funding Denfeld receives from federal sources that East does not. This funding also allows Denfeld to invest in lower class sizes, additional course sections, and other supports. And actually, with the information I have as of today, East actually has more classes on the reduction list than Denfeld does. Secondly, budget funds are being invested in music this coming year as opposed to cutting. About an additional $216,000 has been allotted, which is the equivalent of about 2.4 FTEs for music teaching staff in our middle schools. We're continuing the staffing process, are considering other additions to maintain our music programs at the high school level, and additions in other areas as well. Overall, thanks to passing the referendum, next year's budget invests about $1.45 million in helping lowering class sizes district-wide. An additional $150,000 is invested in updating our curriculum, starting with biology with preparations for updating our social studies materials. Funds are also being invested next year into proven strategies to help close the achievement gap, such as professional learning communities, to formally bring teachers together to study individual student data, and identify strategies to raise student achievement. After many years of public debate regarding buildings and the long-range facilities plan, it's actually good to see the conversation turn toward education and what goes on in the classroom. This is the real work of education, to be in deep discussions about what we want our students to know and be able to do as a result of their educational career in ISD 709, and how we work together to ensure all students have continued access to an excellent education while making the best uses of the resources we are provided.
Thank you Superintendent. I think it was important to get some information out, and I appreciate your words. We now move on to our audience. Clerk Sligapunko will set the timer for three minutes. We like to keep our comments within about three minutes. That's been our standard. We'll start off with Linda Paglisi. Welcome, Linda.
Good evening. My name is Linda Paglisi, and I have been a teacher in the Duluth Public Schools for 21 years, a coach for 10 years, but today I stand before you as a parent of three Denfeld students. Some of you have read the articles about my daughter and her impassioned plea to save Spanish 5, which we have found out a few hours ago has been saved and we're thrilled. But while supporting her, I have discovered that the cuts run much deeper, as Superintendent Gronseth just said. Denfeld will be cutting the following courses, or is considering cutting the following courses, for next year. AP World History, German 5, Chamber Orchestra, Marketing 2, Honors English 11, Earth and Space Science, Industrial Tech, Accounting, and CITs Civil and Criminal Law. As Superintendent Gronseth said, East is also making about a dozen cuts. The facts are that East High School's enrollment is over 1,500 students, while Denfeld has less than 1,000. The difference in enrollment makes it impossible for Denfeld to offer a comprehensive and equal curriculum. I ask this board to look at all options before cutting courses at any Duluth school. In the Duluth School District's Think Kids Initiative, it states, "All children have the right to a quality education delivered by highly qualified educators." It also states that we as a community believe that a wide range of educational opportunities for all schools will lead to lifelong learners and a productive global citizen. Another main point in the Think Kids Initiative is that it's important to maximize available resources and identify innovative ways to attain the resources needed to further support education. Community members I have talked with in the past week offer ideas such as balancing the high school enrollment, traveling between schools for courses when needed, or possibly Skyping courses. I have been a lifelong resident of Duluth, and I, along with the rest of the Duluth community, voted yes in the election last November. The promises made to me for voting yes were to move forward with necessary updates to the curriculum and to help reduce class sizes at all levels and at all schools. I ask that you keep your promises made to the taxpayers and make necessary changes to better service all of the students in the Duluth Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paglisi. Our next speaker is Maria Paglisi. Welcome, Maria. Thanks for coming out.
Hello, my name is Maria Paglisi, and I'm a junior at Denfeld High School. First of all, I would like to express how happy I am that they will be offering Spanish 5 at Denfeld next year. Thank you for supporting the passion of so many Denfeld students. But the problem isn't solved yet. There are dozens of classes being cut, either at East or at Denfeld. And my cousin, Bettina Kepers, actually Skyped a class back decades ago, and I do not understand why we don't offer that option now. If we can do it decades ago with modern technology, with all the new cell phones and all the new computer software, they even livestreamed announcements last year, why can't we somehow get a teacher in a room across the city to set up a camera and teach a class to eight students at Denfeld and eight students at East? That would help save so many classes that could turn a class of 12 into a class of I believe that this district should be open to exploring more creative opportunities for educating, rather than cutting classes. Thank you.
Maria, thank you so much for coming out. We appreciate it. Our next speaker is Andrew Slade. Thanks for coming out, Mr. Slade.
Good evening, Chair Murneke, school board members. I come to you as a father of a Denfeld student, a 10th grader, who next year has potentially lost, I just learned, over half of his classes he would have enrolled in next year. Those would be German 5, AP World History, Chamber Orchestra, and English 11. But this is obviously a bigger picture. It's not, and what I've heard is this comes down to a problem of enrollment and the difference of enrollment between the two high schools. That ignores the much bigger question that needs to be answered. There's already, the fact of that, it bothers me, that just because I happen to live on Park Point, instead of somewhere east of Sixth Avenue East, those options are wiped off the table for my child. That's not fair. It's not equity. There's already a perceived, not only does East already have more kids and therefore more enrollment, there's already the deeply held perception that it's a better school, that it has better options. These two factors feed each other. If you're a family, a professional family, moving to Duluth that we all want so many more of, and you hear about Duluth's two high schools, where are you going to choose to live? You're going to move east. I hear time and time again, that's been true for decades. The problem is just going to get worse if we don't find a way to fix it. This gap between East and West is an achievement gap, and it is as serious of an achievement gap as any other achievement gap you hear about. We need a commitment across the district to academic excellence. We need students in Denfeld to know that they have just as much room to dream, to take challenging classes, to challenge themselves and to move on into the world as students in the East part of town. Students need this commitment, they need to hear this commitment from their schools. When we cancel these advanced classes, the dream dies a little bit every time you do. The students need to see the upperclassmen in these classes challenging themselves, moving on to bigger things. Keeping these classes, though, is just the beginning. If we don't keep them, that disparity will continue to grow, but we need to have a long-term vision that gets us back to clear, balanced enrollment. We need to get to the point where families are not purposely finding some way, even though they live west of the line, to find a way to move to east of the line. And I'm sure that happens, I know of at least three families who have chosen that exact path. Superintendent Gronseth, you quoted that we need to make sure that all students have access to an excellent education. And that's what this comes down to, is you have a fundamental opportunity in front of you to live up to the tenets of the Think Kids campaign. Here, not only in the classes you are going to hopefully return, but in a long-term commitment to balancing the equity between the schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Slade. Thank you for coming out. Our next speaker is Hans Slade. Hans, again, thank you for coming out.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Hans Slade. I am currently a senior at Denfeld. I'm just going to piggyback a bit on what my dad was saying, in that this isn't really an issue that will resolve itself with time, or an issue that will only come up this year. I think over the past three or four years that I've been at Denfeld or Central, I've seen more and more of these classes and opportunities dwindle for my peers. And so this gap in enrollment, this gap in achievement between Denfeld and East continues to widen. The opportunities dwindle at Denfeld, and will, it's climate dedicated to the pursuit of excellence. It's time to take into account the enrollment differences between the schools. As Mrs. Paglisi said, Denfeld's body of 989 students compared to East's 1,550 students, Denfeld has 64% of the students at East. So that means for every two students at Denfeld, there's more than three at East. Now, and this is just a bit of a case study, because this is something that I've experienced with, I'm currently enrolled in German 4, or German 5 at Denfeld. I was unable to take it my senior year as a CITs class because of schedule conflicts and the German teacher at Denfeld not having her masters, and that's something I understand. But next year, there are options available for those kids. However, Denfeld is not able to offer the class with 13 students enrolled, and it is being offered at East with 20 students enrolled. Those numbers compared, Denfeld has 65% of the amount of students in that German class compared to East. So the ratio of students taking German 5 at Denfeld to students taking German 5 at East is actually higher than the ratio of students at Denfeld compared to East. That is to say, when you take into account the enrollment at each school, there are comparatively more students taking German 5 at Denfeld than East, yet the class is not being offered. It is just unfair to offer the class at East and not at Denfeld. I'm aware that there are certain necessary parameters for enrollment in classes. You know, if there's one or two kids in a class, you know, I mean, it's just sometimes simply not viable, or if there's scheduling issues or things like that. However, as long as these disparities in enrollment exist, they must be taken into consideration when you are making the decisions on classes and whether or not they should be offered. The necessary raw numbers for a class at East are simply unable to be met at Denfeld because of the difference of almost 600 students in enrollment. This problem has to be solved for all classes, all grades, no matter if they're CITs or AP or whatever they are. And the solution really only can be found one of two ways. You have to take into account the numbers in each class and compare them, because there is a difference in what the school can provide in terms of numbers, or to reconsider the amount of students living on each side of the border and address the disparities between the population at each school. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Hans. Our next speaker is Lucy Billings. Ms. Billings, thank you for coming out.
I live in the central hillside, and ever since elementary school, the red plan has significantly affected where I had to go to school, especially the new boundaries that were drawn in 2009. After my sixth grade year, these boundary lines sent me to Woodland Middle School, from Morgan, Woodland Middle School, to Morgan Park Middle School. At the time, that change seemed ridiculous to me. Why should I have to ride a bus for almost an hour to get to school when Woodland was only five minutes away? because of the difference of almost 600 students in enrollment. This problem has to be solved for all classes, all grades, no matter if they're CITs or AP or whatever they are. And the solution really only can be found one of two ways. You have to take into account the numbers in each class and compare them, because there is a difference in what the school can provide in terms of numbers, or to reconsider the amount of students living on each side of the border and address the disparities between the population at its, at each school. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Hans. Our next speaker is Lucy Billings. Ms. Billings, thank you for coming out.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Lucy Billings, and I'm a junior at Denfeld High School. I live in the central hillside, and ever since elementary school, the red plan has significantly affected where I had to go to school, especially the new boundaries that were drawn in 2009. After my sixth grade year, these boundary lines sent me to Woodland Middle School, from Morgan, Woodland Middle School to Morgan Park Middle School. At the time, that change seemed ridiculous to me. Why should I have to ride a bus for almost an hour to get to school when Woodland was only five minutes away? I came to realize, however, that it didn't matter in the long run. I met new friends, had wonderful teachers, and most importantly, the education I got and opportunities I was offered at Morgan Park were exactly the same as they would have been at Woodland. Now I'm a junior in high school, and there is no longer that simplicity of curriculum that equalizes all middle school educations. The classes each individual student takes in high school create his or her own distinct path, but that path is limited by the selection of classes offered by the school. When our two Duluth Public High Schools begin to offer different classes, and not because of the differences in students' interest, it seems that it does in fact matter which side of the boundary line I fall on. There are 188 classes in the 2014 high school course catalog, and when registering for senior year, we picked the 12 that we think will best prepare us for college admissions, career exploration and readiness, and life in general after high school. After lots of deliberation, I put together a schedule of 12 AP and CITs classes for next year. I later found out that two of my 12, and even more for other students, are on schedule to be cut from Denfeld next year, but those same classes will be offered at East. At first I was thinking, how could this be? Isn't there some kind of rule that the two schools have to be equal? I couldn't understand how the hundreds of juniors in the Duluth Public School system were going to be offered better opportunities for the education than we were, simply because they go to the other high school. We were told that we didn't have enough students signed up for Spanish V at Denfeld, but in fact, the ratio of total students in our school to those who signed up for the class is the same as that ratio at East, or as Hans told you, is actually higher. And after looking into the issue further, I understand that the funding and full-time equivalents allocated to Denfeld are proportionate to the number of students enrolled here. But if the number of students who enroll is dependent on the boundary lines that were drawn, how can it be tolerated that the numbers for the two schools aren't equal, when the inequality results in a difference in the capacity of our educations? Our two high schools should both be appropriated what means are necessary to offer the same classes. My address should not determine the quality of my education. I see the difficulty that would, there would be in redrawing the boundary lines, but temporary options exist to save these classes, like Skyping, like Ms. Paglisi and Maria were talking about. It's important enough as Denfeld students to us to take these classes, that we are more than willing to be flexible to find these solutions. I've not given up hope that with your help, we can find a way to offer the same variety of classes to Denfeld in the coming years and maintain the standard of excellence in our school district, and I have faith that the appropriate decisions will be made to put this right. Thank you.
Lucy, thank you so much for coming out. Member Harla, on the other side.
As a side note, I, I just want to express, I hope I'm speaking for the board. Hans and Maria and Lucy, tremendous job, tremendous job speaking and bringing about the point, and all of us, the adults in this room couldn't be more proud of you.
And for the rest of the students, thank you so much for coming out. It's, it's good to see you. Last night I was able to go to a Students for the Future meeting with some other members of the board, and superintendent, and Mr. Crawford, and Mr. Howes, and totally run by the students, and I tell you, folks, we've got some great students out there who do a wonderful job. We now move on to reading of communications and petitions. There are none, so we go on to the report of the superintendent.
Well, I, I too would like to start by thanking the Students for the Future, who led a, a great community discussion last night regarding school climate. And they shared Denfeld's Liptub, and they also shared a documentary on diversity that was created by East students, and both of them were extremely well-done and very impressive. And I hope that many people take the opportunity to go on YouTube and look up those videos, because they are well worth the time to do so. It really brought light to some very real issues that are going on in our high schools and throughout our community, really. They also facilitated small group discussions using very well-written questions, and participants had the opportunity to share their thoughts with the whole group after the small group discussions, and there were some really meaningful ideas shared, and I know that they're gathering those thoughts, typing them up, and so they can be shared with myself and the School Board. So I'll be forwarding those as soon as I get them. Duluth can certainly be proud of these students and the work that they do, and I know Paul was there. And they've shown that students are a really valuable source of input, and that they have, they are very capable leaders. And I don't think I need to remind anyone in the room, especially the back portion of the room right now, that the end of school is right around the corner, and soon we'll be attending graduations, and our graduating seniors will be starting the next chapters of their lives, and many of them will be going on to some kind of post-secondary education. And tonight, two very lucky seniors will receive a little help financing that education with the help from the Hayes Family Scholarship, which provides an annual scholarship for a graduate of each of Duluth's two high schools who are enrolling in post-secondary school in the fall. There will be two non-renewable awards of $2,500 each, and they will be awarded this evening, one to an East high school graduate and one to a Denfeld high school graduate. And Assistant, Assistant Superintendent Ed Crawford and the School Board student reps will oversee this year's drawing from the Fred Hayes Scholarship Trust Bowl, and one winner for each high school, as well as two alternates for each school will be drawn. So, without further ado. And it is a random drawing of any seniors who choose to put their name in the bowl.
Which school is that?
Which is this?
Denfeld.
Yeah, the first drawing is for Denfeld students.
And Kobe, do you want to read the name?
Samuel Kemp. Well, congratulations to Samuel Kemp. Thank you, and now for the Duluth East recipient. This has always been a mess. And Paul, if you would draw a name and read it. While they're getting ready, this has been going on for a long time, and this is how the scholarship wanted it done, just a random drawing. Paul, do you want to read it into the mic?
Trigve Renin.
Ah, sounds Norwegian to me. So we have two winners, and I'm sure they'll be surprised when the principals tell them about their award. Thank you very much, Ms. Tavareco and Assistant Superintendent Crawford. We now move on to the, we now move on to the Education Committee report. Member Harla. Did you push your button? There we go. Hold it.
Great, well, thank you very much, and congratulations to those students. May the odds ever be in your favor. For our, our first, the first portion of our Education Committee meeting that we had had, we had quite a bit of discussion this last weekend, this last week. The first portion was a great presentation that we were given by Tanya Lake, Dr. Tanya Lake, and she's been doing a lot with the World's Best Workforce Evaluation. She gave us a really great presentation on how we, as a district, are moving forward in response to this legislation. So thank you for your presentation on that. And then, there was a conversation that the district has been forming, or will have a District Advisory Committee with about 20, 20 people, two board members, and 18 members of the community that are going to be a part of how we connect our community, everything, okay, great. How we connect our community and our schools, and just continuing to kind of connect those gaps. How do we find opportunities in our community that enhance classroom learning, whether it's finding internship opportunities, or just kind of just continuing to strengthen that relationship between the schools and the community? So, I was recommended that the, both of those items were received as informational. We then had a conversation about the extracurricular conference process, and it was recommended that we receive, receive the information as, the item as informational, and, and just the big change in that, there was some change in the wordings with how we, how we speak, how we air grievances to, when it comes to our athletic departments, and nothing within the policy changed. They, we, it's in line with what the Minnesota State High School League has in place, it's just that they changed the template and they made the language a lot cleaner, because it was really confusing for folks, and any way that we can be better communicating from student level through district level that we need is great, so I'm really glad that we had that. So it was recommended that it was, that we receive it as informational. We then had, excuse me, we had then a presentation on the student handbook, and a large thank you to the staff members that have been working tirelessly on the changes in the student handbook. This, it's much more readable, they took a lot more time to have the layout be more accessible. There was some comments kind of made back and forth about the potential of keeping the, just having the handbook online, and I know I, a couple of members had agreed, I think it's important that it is something that's mailed out to our students as, as an equity piece, just so that we all have, everyone can be able to, can refer back to a paper copy, but it also will be posted online, and I know that the staff members there said you could even click down, there are hot links within it, so if you have questions on attire or any of those types of things, you'd be able to do that. So I know it took a lot of hours for those staff members to go through that, and we, we thank them very much for their hard work on it. The next piece that we had was, were grant applications, and it was recommended that we receive them as informational. We had a presentation from Jay Ressler and Pam Reese of Community Ed and Head Start, and they are applying, excuse me, they're applying for some school readiness dollars, and so it was recommended that we receive that item as informational. Then we'll move into our action items here. In, Pam Reese stayed and presented the 2014-2015 State Head Start Grant Application, and, and it's recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve our, the grant application for the 2014-2015 Head Start Grant Application. And Chair, would you like me just to read through and we approve? Okay, great, thank you. Also, we have some extended field trip requests. East High School physics students traveled to Chicago in, in May and had a, had a really great time. And then our, our Duluth Public Schools 11th and 12th grade hosts are the Health Occupation Students of America, traveled to Orlando, or will be traveling in June to complete their National Leadership Conference, and that's funded through student fees. And then, 4th grade students from Lowell Elementary traveled to Wolf Ridge Environmental Learning Central, April 23rd to 25th. They did a lot of things with environmental pieces and, and had a great time. So it was recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve the above extended field trip requests. Questions? Okay, we'll keep going. The next piece, we'll head into Policy 5060, the Collection and Maintenance Dissemination and Retention of Student Records and Information. They're attached for a second reading, so it's recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve revisions to Policy 5060, Collection, Maintenance, Dissemination, and Retention of Student Records and Information for the second reading. And then we had Policy 5093, the Duluth Public Schools ISD 709 Restrictive Procedures Plan for the Second Reading. Laura Frederickson, Director of Special Services, was available for any of our questions. It was the second reading of this, and so we accepted, we were, it's recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve Policy 5093 for the second reading. The next piece is a resolution to accept of grant awards to the Duluth Public Schools. The, except, it's the Resolution E, oh, I need to move to that one. Excuse me. It's not coming up on here. Yeah. Am I, oh, sorry. I read it wrong, sorry. So I'm looking for the, it's actually, it's listed as 96, but it's actually 99. So, whereas Minnesota State, Minnesota Statute 465.03 requires a school district to accept grants by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in full, and whereas accepted in the grand accordance to the, to the donor's terms in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools, now therefore be resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept the below-described grants from said organizations in accordance to the terms set forth herein. Be it there, be it further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to these various organizations. So I move Resolution E 5143180.
The resolution's been moved, is there a second? Second by Member Lafrer Kemp. Any discussion on this particular resolution? See none, all in favor, I'm sorry?
I just wanted to, to say a large thank you to the Duluth Superior Area Community Foundation, Duluth Public Schools Endowment Fund. Just very grateful for their continued support, and I know there are many foundations in our community that help to enrich our, to enrich everyday lives of our students, and just very thankful, thankful to them.
As a lifelong Duluthian, I've always been just amazed, and I was a recipient of some monies from a local scholarship, I'm amazed at how generous the citizens of Duluth and the corporations and other organizations and groups have been to help out our schools and our students. Any other discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Resolution passes unanimously to F.
And then F is our Revised ISD 709 Calendar 2014-2015 School Year. So it's recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve the Revised ISD 709 Calendar 2014-2015. The big changes that they had in the calendar this, for the coming year, is that there will be, so we added for days to accommodate the, the passage of our recent contract, and then Christmas, sorry, winter break will be two official weeks, because we didn't want to have to have folks come back, what was it, they were going to come back on the, they were after, they would have to just come back for one day. So in lieu of that day, that being a teacher workday, there, those teachers will be doing a workday in August in preparation, and from here on out, we'll be able to continue that schedule, but just a little bit of, a little bit of juggling when it comes to scheduling. So that was, those are the biggest change, and I look forward to a good calendar for the coming year. And then diploma requests, which, very exciting, I, it's that season of the year, I'm just very excited for these. What we liked, the following students have completed high school graduation requirements and should be awarded a diploma. Freddy Gustavo Benish, Taylor Marie Gelati, Zachary E. Weneman. Wait, Weneman, Weneman. So it's recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve the above diploma request, and I move the Education Committee report.
It's been moved, is there a second? Second by Member Reston. Any discussion? I'd like to say one thing is, for the seniors, good news is, is you don't have to come early next year for your sophos and juniors, the bad news is you're going to be coming a little earlier.
The great news.
It's, it's a wonderful news, it's just more education. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor of accepting the Education Committee report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Member, Member Walti.
Because it is of such important educational interest, I, I would like to just mention a thought that has occurred to me in light of the people who've come here to speak, and it's not on the agenda, but it seems to be on the minds of our students and the community. And I'd just like to toss out an idea, and I don't know if it will generate conversation, but it's something that I would like us to pursue at some point before we commence the next school year. Would it be acceptable if I ran an idea past you?
It's, we can't add things to the agenda during a public meeting, that has to be, we have to have public, you know, public information, public disclosure prior to. So maybe we can discuss this in next month's education meeting.
No, I, I'll make a parliamentary point. Basically, if the, if the entire board does not object to an addition like this, the entire board could go ahead and do this and allow a brief discussion.
No, it's, it's out of order, I'm going to rule it's out of order, let's, let's bring this up next June.
If I could just mention, I would love to speak with some of the students before you depart, so I'm going to keep an eagle eye out for you, and if you begin departing, I'm going to run an idea past you as you leave, otherwise stick around to the end of the meeting and maybe we can talk. Otherwise, stick around to the end of the meeting and maybe we can talk.
Let's have a vote on the education, I'm sorry, Mr. Member Johnston.
I just, I think that Member Walti just wanted to make a comment on the education thing, and I don't understand why, he wasn't making for an agenda item, he just wanted to make a comment.
Was, was this, I'm going to be, I thought you were adding an agenda item. You just want to make a comment? Hold it, well, are you, do you want to keep? Okay. For a point of information, again, I apologize. I thought that Member Walti was adding an agenda item, which would be out of order. If he wants to comment on the Education Committee report, that's perfectly acceptable, and I hope, I hope I didn't offend anybody. Member Walti?
I, I.
Thank you. I'm sorry about this. We're also having trouble with the system, as you can see.
That's right. We need some students up here to run our technology, we're too old to do this. Okay, okay, Member Sligapunko, some of us are a little old. As I, as I heard you and I was speaking, I was thinking about this, I've thought for a very long time, since the time that I was on the school board, and certainly through the discussions of the RED Plan, something that appealed to me a great deal. If you recall, you were probably all in grade school at the time, but somebody had suggested that we have just one high school instead of two high schools as an alternative. That did not pan out. We have two campuses. But I, I think that everyone up here strongly agrees with the students about the importance of having equity in, in our schools. They don't have to be complete uniform, but there has to be a sense that both schools offer the complete kind of education that students ought to have. I've thought for a long time that one of the things that perhaps we ought to do that would, would enhance our community, because we are, because of our great length, prone to look at ourselves as east and west, is think of ourselves as having not, not two schools, but two campuses of the same school. And we did have ITV classes, that was the old way of describing what the young people are calling Skype. And it does occur to me that something like that might be considered. But another thing that occurs to me is, perhaps instead of, of having our students planted in one building for an entire school year, it's always occurred to me that it might not be a bad idea to have, have some buses and some transportations, and have some courses at one school and some courses at the other, and have our student population move back and forth, like students might on a college campus that had a couple of different campuses. And I know this would involve some, a great deal of refinement in terms of scheduling, and some detailed discussion about transportation costs. I had to ask my associate here what we have in the way of a seventh hour, embarrassed to say that I did not know that, and apparently it's only music, but I think it would be very tempting to offer some, some zero hour classes like this, that might give us more opportunity to try some busing and try mixing our population, so that no child in, in our 9th through 12th grade system is, is denied access to courses that are offered on what I would prefer to consider another campus. So that is an idea I hope we can consider over the course of this, of the summer. It would be an extremely difficult and challenging thing to put into effect, but it might be something very worth investigating.
Thank you, Member Walti. And again, I apologize for my misunderstanding. We are voting on the education report, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. We now move, Annie, do you want to turn? We now move to our Human Resources Report with Member Walti. Whoops, did you have your button?
Nope, not yet. Here we go. There we go. The Human Resources Committee met, and we did our routine things. We had one certified appointment to deal with, we had 15 certified co-curriculars appointments, we had 13 certified leaves, one certified long-term sub, three certified resignations, we had 12 certified retirements, we had one non-certified appointment, three non-certified extensions, there are 15 non-certified leaves, seven non-certified permanent increases, one non-certified promotion, one non-certified resignation, five non-certified retirements, and one non-certified temporary increase. There will be a resolution having to do with the termination of certified hourly staff. I've been advised that this is a routine that we engage in every year, and I will read that shortly. There was a, another placeholder resolution that I understand has been pulled. And then we have a, an information item having to do with a, a suggested policy change, 9045 negotiating committee review. I will say that we had an extensive discussion, we have had some discussions about how we should have a, as a school board, negotiating committee set up for our, our contract talks with our bargaining units. And there were some questions about how well we handled that this year, and we formed a committee that will be meeting at some point, trying to hash out mutually agreeable language, so that we know who's negotiating under what circumstances. And I've not heard back from anybody sitting on that committee, but hopefully that will be worked out. I do have a resolution, the one that I said was routine, termination of certified hourly staff, and if you'd like, I would be happy to read that.
With your please.
For the consideration of the board. Mr. Chairman, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 709 St. Louis County, Minnesota, that the employment of the following hourly teachers shall terminate effective at the end of the school day on June 6th, 2014, unless another date is indicated below, in which case the employment of the individual shall terminate on that date. Mr. Chairman, there are 32 names on the list, I, for brevity's sake, will not read them all, but there is a further, be it resolved, that the clerk of the school board shall notify such teachers in writing before July 1st, 2014, of the termination of their employment. Mr. Chairman, I move Resolation, Resolution HR 5-14-3177 dated May 20th, 2014.
Thank you, Member Walti, is there a second? Second by Member Sligapunko. Any discussion? Member Johnston?
Chairman Walti, if I could, again, I ask this all the time, I never quite understand this, but is this just the part-time people then, or since these are hourly staff, these are not full-time teachers? Just explain a little bit what typically these people are, and why we're doing this.
These are, they're hourly associates, I call them associates, from another company that I used to work at, but they are hourly teachers that we have with us. Many of them are hired year after year, just to complete maybe a section or two, or some of them work in our Adult Learning Center, and because they're less than a .5, they're not considered contracted teachers. And on an annual basis, we do hire and terminate and rehire for the following year for our needs.
Appreciate that, Mr. Sworzki, and for the audience out there, appreciate Member Walti explaining, not really terminating them, in another sense of the word, but, Member Sligapunko.
Thanks, Chairman Ernike. I just want to also make a comment about this list, because I do see many are retired teachers from before, and they come back and teach maybe a few hours, I mean, they're veteran teachers, and I recognize some of them that were excellent teachers when they were teaching, and I tout with them. But I just wanted to mention that they've come back to help the district with their knowledge, so that's one of the reasons that they are hourly, and they get terminated every year, so.
Thank you, Member Sligapunko. Member Johnston, I'm sorry, Member Harla.
I just want to, I just, I'm noticing, and this is the time of year where we have quite a few teachers that are retiring, and just want to say thank you to those teachers that have announced, and just thank you for their service. I know we'll be having an award reception this week, this Thursday, and just really proud of the, of the staff that we, that we're seeing, that, that teach in our district. Again, we are, we do have the most experienced district, a pool of teachers in the state, something we can be very proud of. So a very, very thank you, very large thank you to the, to the service of the teachers that are retiring this year.
Thank you. We will now vote on the resolution. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. And now we move on to the Human Resources Committee Report as a whole. Do you want to move that?
I move the acceptance of the Human Resource Committee Report.
Is there a second? It was seconded by Member Harla, discussion. I would like to make one comment if I could. I do like to get along with people, and we had previously a long contract with the, with the DFT prior to that, and so when I stepped in his chair, we were kind of, it'd been years since, a couple, a few years since we'd been involved in this. We now have a subcommittee chaired by Mr. Westom, and I'm, and also volunteered by Member Johnston and Member Loffler Kemp, and I appreciate that. And knowing Mr. Westom as I, as I do, I'm sure he's already had a number of meetings, and he'll be reporting back to us with a, with a policy. Any other discussion on the HR report? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you, Member Walti. We now move on to the Business Report. Member Loffler Kemp.
Thank you, Chairman Ernike. And I also. I just want to also thank all of the students that are here today, and that, that spoke and just came to show your support. I actually will be out at Denfeld tomorrow morning at 7:45 with the Key Club, so I look forward to being out there. In terms of the Business Committee Report, the Financial Report, a lot of the usual reports, approval of payments of claims, budget revisions, wire transfers, investment transactions, WADM projections, and just for folks out there, that's weighted average daily membership. We had a long discussion on that, and, at the committee meeting, and one of the things I would just mention, and that's on page 35, that our projections of student enrollment were very accurate, and this is significant when you look at those and showing enrollment stability in the district, and also it's helpful in staffing projections. So that is what the WADM report is, why that's important. Fundraisers, investment in schoolchildren, I would just add is that, on page 37, it lists a number of organizations and individuals that have provided support, both to Denfeld, Homecroft, Lakewood, and we really, again, thank the public and the organizations for supporting and investing in our schools. Under bids, RFPs, and quote reports, bids, RFPs, RFP Number 270, which is Insurance Brokerage and Risk Management Services for Duluth Public Schools, and that's a renewal. And it's recommended that the Duluth School, School Board authorize this renewal of insurance and our brokerage and risk management services for the 2014-2015 policy year. And just to note that we've used this agency since 2009. Quotes, Quote 4163, District Wide Brooklayer Labor, Quotes 41, and that's recommended, Quotes 41651, Annual Inspection and Service of Boilers, also recommended, Quote 4167, Annual Service and Maintenance of Emergency Generators, recommended, and Quote 4168, District Wide Flooring Installation Labor, also recommended, Quote 4170, District Wide Plumbing Labor, also recommended, and Quote 4171, Refuge Removal and Recycling Services, the Contract with Nordic Waste, and that's recommended, we renew that, and then Quote 4172, District Wide Roofing Labor, and that is also recommended. And I just, kind of one point, I guess I want to say, is we spent a lot of time, over the last couple of months, as well as at the Business Committee, going through these quotes, and want to thank, even though he's not here, our facility director, Carrie Leiter, for providing a lot of detailed information for us as school board members to, to understand the quotes and the process. And so there was a lot of discussion at the Business Committee on these. Number three, Policies and Regulations. Policy One, Suspension of Policy, 3136, Travel in District, in State, and Out of State, and it's recommended that we, we suspend this policy for this situation. Bylaw 9070, Regular Meetings, again, it's recommended that Duluth School Board Review and Approve Changes to Bylaw 97 for the first reading. Bylaw 9100, Special Meetings, it's recommended that the Duluth School Board Review and Approve Changes to Bylaw 9100 for the first reading. And again, that's on page 65. Contracts, Change Orders, and Leases, Contracts, the School Resource Offices at Middle School and High Schools, it's recommended that the Duluth School Board Approve Renewing the Contract with the City of Duluth. And that is for the Resource Officers at Denfeld East, Lincoln Park, and Ordine. And again, I want to just kind of say thank you to our Resource Offices for the many roles that they play in building relationships with our students and our staff. Number two, AMBI, that's the Contract for Roof Replacement and Masony Restoration Project at Congdon Park Elementary School, that's recommended. There's no change orders or leases. And then, Chairman Ernike, we have some resolutions, do you want me to?
Yes, let's consider each of these two resolutions, please.
Okay. So the resolutions are, the first one's on page 70.
Would you like to read it, Member Harla, a member of Loffler Kemp?
Sure. Resolution B 5143176, Resolution Correcting the Legal Description Listed in Resolution B 8133120, Authorizing the Sale of Real Property Located at 3226 Vernon Street. And the resolution, again, B 5143176, May 20th, 2014, corrective resolution, Resolution Correcting the, I just, the legal description listed in Resolution B 8133120, Authorizing the Sale of Real Property Located at 3326 Vernon Street. Whereas the legal description included in Resolution B 8133120 was incorrect, now therefore be it resolved that the School Board hereby reaffirms Resolution B 8133120, Authorizing the Sale of Real Property Located at 3326 Vernon Street, with corrected property legally described as the westerly 40 feet of Lot 18, Block 5, Bryant Addition to Duluth 3rd Division, except the southerly 52 feet, St. Louis County, Minnesota, and the easterly 35 feet of the north 101.28 feet of Lot 18, Block 5, except the easterly 17 feet, therefore of Bryant Addition to Duluth 3rd Division, St. Louis County, Minnesota. And a motion again to approve that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Walti, or by Member Sligapunko. Any discussion?
Thank you.
We have to vote on this.
Okay.
I have a discussion. Member Westom and I grew up in that area, and we used to throw rocks at each other down on Vernon Street, close to my heart. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Member Loffler Kemp, would you go on to the next resolution, please?
Resolution Number B 5143182, Granting a Pedestrian Trail Easement to the City of Duluth at Rockridge School, and I make a motion to approve this. The resolution is, whereas Independent School District Number 709 is the owner of the property in St. Louis County, Minnesota, legally described in Exhibit A, attached hereto, and whereas the City of Duluth wishes to obtain an easement across this property for the benefit of the general public and the City of Duluth, and whereas the pedestrian trail easement is generally described. generally described and shown in Exhibit B, and whereas the final legal description, exhibit, and agreement for this easement will be contingent upon the approval of a UDC, which is the Unified Development Code zoning map amendment, and will change the Rockridge property from a R1 zone to a RP zone as shown in Exhibit C. Now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District number 709, St. Louis County, State of Minnesota, that the dedication of the new pedestrian trail easement at Rockridge School to the city of Duluth, as conditioned above, is hereby approved. Be it further resolved that the School Board authorizes the School Board Chair to execute the final easement agreement upon approval of the UDC, again Unified Development Code zoning map amendment.
Motion.
And again, a motion to approve.
It's been moved. Is there a second? Seconded by Member Westholm. Any discussion?
Only that, this is close to my heart, because I live in this neighborhood, and I was really grateful for the citizens who came out to our meeting a couple of weeks ago that the school district held and where this was talked about, as well as much other input.
We had a very nice meeting with a number of residents in that area, and I think a lot of problems were resolved at that meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? It passes. Number six.
Okay, informational, and these items are provided for informational purposes only and no action is required. Expenditure contracts on page 75, revenue contracts on page 97, D, Facilities Management and Capital Projects Status Report 99, and then future items, fiscal year 2015 budget adoption, which will be in June, B, 10-year capital facilities plan update, and C, child nutrition lunch price review. May I have a motion to approve the report?
It's been moved by a member, Laffler Kemp, seconded by a member, Harla. Any discussion? Member Welty.
Whoops, let me try that again. Hold it. I would like to withhold three policies and regulations, A2. Hold it now. That's one E2? Three A2. I'm sorry. I can't find it. Three A2, okay. Is that the only one? Okay. Member Westholm?
I want to withhold one AF. I just have a quick question on WADM projections.
Westholm, thank you. And Member Johnston?
Two AB.
Two, two A, two AB, I'm sorry, that's not right.
Two B, I guess it is.
Two B? The RFPs?
Yeah.
Okay.
And also three A3.
Three A3. Okay, without objection, we will go on. I'm sorry. Member Seligapunko.
Thank you. I have four A1.
And please, give me a chance to get, four A1?
Four A1, and six A. I just have a question.
And six A. Thank you. I see no other lights. If, without objection, I would like to just take these in order. Seeing no objection, we'll start with Mr. Westholm. Oh, I'm sorry, Art, I missed, I missed, Member Johnston.
Actually, if you, Mr. Chair, if you would consider going to the policies first, I think that's right after kind of like a resolution, and I thought I'd rather do those first, if you wouldn't mind.
It's fine. Any objection to that? I think that's fine. Policies first, then we'll start with Mr. Wel, and please, again, I do this very quickly, I try my best. Member Welty, I have you for bylaw 9070. If you will just entertain, let me take a quick look. Yes. Yes, I was interested in. Oh, okay. I'm sorry, Member Welty, if I can, as usual, interrupt you. Bylaw 9070, regular meetings, and you'll find this on page 61. And now back to you, Member Welty. Sorry about that. Okay, here we go. Make sure I have the right one when, remember, Johnston withheld it when I was, had a question about whether or not I got the right one. But this one, I have to confess, I had another engagement at the business committee meeting and did not have a chance to discuss this at that time, so I do not know what discussion took place after my departure from the business committee meeting. But I did lean over and I asked the superintendent whose idea this was, to change the policy so that two members with a written request could no longer request a meeting, but it would require three. And heard subsequently that there was a state statute that outlined that there would be, should be three. However, I have just had a chance to look at it, because the state statute, 123B.09, Boards of Independent School Districts, does mention it. And the subdivision six, having to do with meetings, does have a mention of three members. But the fact of the matter is, it does not deny us a chance to have a smaller number of people put in a request. It does not forbid it. The operative language says, "Special meetings may be called by the Chair or the Clerk, or any three members upon notice mailed to each member at least three days prior thereto." We do have local control, and our policies for a great many years have allowed two members to request that there be a meeting. Since I've been on the board, there have been no such requests. But I frankly would prefer that we continue to have our existing policy, since it does not contradict state law. It just simply is a little bit more lenient in allowing a smaller number of people to call a meeting. Thank you, Member Welty. Member Johnston?
Yeah, this, there was very little discussion on this, so we had a very unpleasant discussion before that, two members left at that. Again, I've got a question into the Minnesota School Board Association on this, asking for legal interpretation. And since I think that we really haven't had much discussion, I guess I would ask this board to table this, so we can have a thorough discussion on it at the next committee meeting.
Is that a motion to table?
Yes, it is.
Is there a second? Seeing no second, we move on. Member Seligapunko.
Thank you. I just want, I know, Member Welty, when you're asking about this, I think this came up, because back in January, and we were talking about, because we needed extra meetings for the budget, and the request was made by Member Johnston to keep all of our special meetings or extra ones on a Tuesday. So I think that's kind of how this came up, was just, well, you know, because we've gone through the last six years where we have, we had a lot of extra special meetings, just because we were going through the building plan. So we'd have some, some weeks where we'd have three or four nights in a row where we had special meetings. And now that we don't have that as much, but we still need special meetings, just because we have property, sales, or purchases, I mean, we have sometimes expulsion hearings, and there are different things. So I think when that came up in January, what I'm thinking is, our staff looked at it, and we didn't really have it, you know, where it was set kind of on certain days, or trying to keep them as close as possible. So I think that's why this kept up, because we just, we try not to have too many special meetings, but it's sometimes it's just impossible to avoid it. So I think that was the reason that this whole thing came up.
Thank you, Member Seligapunko. Member Harla?
I just wanted to echo that in saying that I appreciate the Tuesday date, having a full-time job and wanting to make sure that I show up and have things on my calendar in advance, and understanding that our schedules need to be a little bit flexible. I appreciate that there's a concrete, concrete ten, I feel, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Member Harla. Member Welty? Mr. Chairman, Member Seligapunko, this language has nothing to do with the day of the week that a meeting would be held. I mean, at least the portion that we are changing is that we're going to require three board members to request special meetings. And it's more restrictive if you have a minority of two. And this board does have a minority of two, and being one of those two members, I'm particularly sensitive to having my options to discuss things limited, as they have been in some previous meetings. I would prefer that that portion not change. If we, if we strike, if we strike the three and go back to two, I don't have any particular objection to this. So at this time, I would move to amend this proposed change to go back to two board members rather than three. Is there a second? Seconded by Member Johnston, speaking to the amendment, Member Welty? One more time. You're not hitting your button, are you? Oh, Art, I'm sorry, thank you. Still not. You're on. Thank you. I'll be very brief, because I think I've already stated the case. The state statute does not require that we demand that it be three board members. The state statute does not require that it be three members. The school district is allowed to draw its own more lenient, more generous number. It's been around for a great many years. And as a member of a two-person minority on some issues of some particular concern, I feel targeted by this particular part of the change. I don't have any particular objection to the rest of it, but I simply think that we should not be sending out strong signals that two of our members may not be trusted, because I do not think that that would be the intent of the board.
I'm going to have to comment here. I think now we might be escalating that a little bit. We're not talking about trust at all. And I agree with Member Harla, that we have a lot of meetings. We have, if you saw my calendar right now for me in June, it's mind-numbing. And I hope you don't take that as personally, I don't hope you, and I hope you don't take that as being targeted. I just think that we are following state statute, and that's about all of the reason I'm supporting that. Member Westholm, you're next.
You know, I heard what Member Welty read in the statute, and just listening to that, seems to me the plain language does say three. I'd have to spend some time looking more at the whole statute language, but it sounds like it says three. And I'm not even sure, we should be able to go to two, to be honest, so that's why I'd be not voting for the proposed amendment, to stay with two.
Member Johnston?
Maybe Mr., or Member Welty can correct me on this, but the statute, I don't have it with me here, but the statute refers to meetings and special meetings, but does not refer to committee of the whole. Is that correct? Does anybody have that statute, or does that say committee of the whole meetings?
Well, all right, this is a point of order, then, I'll allow.
Point of information.
Yeah, point of, I'll allow Member Welty to answer, Member Johnston, and then go back to Member Johnston. Okay, Member Welty. I'll read the provisions, subdivision six meetings. A majority of the voting members of the board shall constitute a quorum. No contract shall be made or authorized, except at a regular meeting of the board, or at a special meeting, at which all members are present, or of which all members have had notice. Special meetings may be called by the Chair or the Clerk, or any three members upon notice mailed to each member at least three days prior thereto. And I, as the legal point, I guess I would disagree with what Member Westholm says, but I understand Member Johnston is looking for clarification from the Minnesota School Boards Association, and before we act, I hope we would get their recommendation. Thank you, Member Welty. We return, if you let me hit the buttons. Here we go. Member Johnston?
Sure, thank you, Member Welty. Yes, you corrected it, this, the statute does not, does not apply to committees of the whole in this resolution. This proposed change only refers to committees of the whole. So to say that this is somehow predicated on Minnesota statute is completely wrong. I guess my question is, the superintendent is, why was this put in at this point?
Superintendent?
I think that's already been discussed. As we were looking at this policy, we regularly refer to the statute, if there's a statute that goes along with it. And seeing that the statute said three school board members, the change was proposed to go along with the statute.
Thank you. Member Laffler Kemp?
Yeah, I just wanted to, it's kind of now been said, but say that we have been looking at other policies since I've been on the board, and making sure we're, that they're updated, that they're followed, and so I think it is important that we follow this, along with any other statutes that we should be updating as we're reviewing our policies, so.
Thank you, Member Johnston.
I'll have to correct the members and the superintendent here, is that Minnesota statute 123BO9 subdivision six does not apply to committees of the whole. I'd like to have some acknowledgement of the people that have been saying that, that that is, that is an incorrect statement, and that that seems to be the only justification for that, certainly as Member Welty indicated. This would only apply to the minority of this board, which is Member Welty and myself, and I can't recall Member Welty and myself ever having even called the committee of the whole meeting. So I really don't understand what this is all about. And I guess I'd ask again, the superintendent or the Chair, is why is this here?
Three members would still be a minority. I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, Member, Mr. Hanson.
Thank you, Chair Murnicki and board members. When we put both of these policy matters in front of you for consideration, I'm including 9100 here, along with 9070. And 9100 is the bylaw that speaks to special meetings and tracks more directly with the statute that we were making reference to. We just thought there was some simplification and ease of use, if you will, in terms of having, using the same basis for setting meeting dates regardless of which type of meeting it is. If you find it more convenient to set different guidelines for different types of meetings, it's obviously up to the school board.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hanson. Again, I want to mention that some people are taking an intent in this that just isn't there. I myself just think that it's a good policy that we can follow. Member Johnston?
Well, I have to ask again, what is the intent? The intent isn't following Minnesota statute. Nobody that I know has even called this, so what, again, I ask, I'd like to have an answer, what is the intent of this?
Thank you, Member Johnston.
I'm asking your point of information to the superintendent or the Chair, is what is the intent of this? I know people are laughing at it, but I think that's a reasonable question to ask, what the intent is.
No one's laughing. No one is laughing. Member Hanson, I mean, Mr. Hanson, I'm sorry about that.
As we discussed at the business committee meeting, we had a concern within the administration that the direction that we received on a Thursday in January, the 23rd, at a committee that the direction that we received on a Thursday in January, the 23rd, at a committee of the whole meeting, to try to schedule as many meetings as possible for Tuesdays, which was what we were trying to follow, we ran into a bit of difficulty with that in the fourth Tuesday in April and the first Tuesday in May. And when it appeared as though we might be down to two Tuesdays as the eligible dates, we did see that as restrictive. And so that's why we brought both of these items together, to have your discussion that you're now having, and just give us better direction as to what days you would like the meetings, like us to try to schedule meetings for, that we want to accommodate the board in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Officer Kemp?
This is more just a point of information for the public out there, that there are a number of statutes, Minnesota statutes, from 2013, and dealing with a number of issues that we, as a school board, are responsible for in terms of our board and our duties. And so I just, this is just one of a number of statutes, and I just wanted you to, you know, know that. And then, you know, again, just on the Tuesday date, I meant to speak towards that. I, again, agree with what's been said, like many people, having a full-time job, having children's activities, it's helpful to have a consistent date. And so I appreciated when the administration came to us to try and do that.
Thank you. Member Johnston?
I have to make a correction for the members again here, as that, one, this is the language that we're having on this, where somebody here is asking us to change, is not in the statute. There's not been any changes to the statute from 2013 anyway, or '14. And again, nothing in the statute talks about committee of the whole. And we are not changing the Tuesday. That is a totally irrelevant discussion, because it's already Tuesday, and the verbiage is already Tuesday. That is not being changed. And, you know, again, I'm a little frustrated here, because I'm asking what the intent is, and I keep getting reasons that are totally incorrect. And so, again, I'm asking for this board to vote for this amendment, which would put it back to three. I certainly have no problem with the rest of the changes, which are pretty insignificant.
Thank you, Member Johnston. We'll now vote on the, I'm sorry. Wait a second. Member Waltie?
I now had a chance to take a look at the two different resolutions. I was confused when I first came in here, because I didn't realize that there were two resolutions related to meetings, each of which were reducing the number of, or increasing the number of people required to have them. I think my major consideration, concern would be the 9100. I believe I, when I made a motion to change the language of 9070, which does mention the third Tuesday, that that is the one that my amendment went to. I will keep that there, applied to 9070, but I'll shortly, or somebody will probably shortly be making a very similar one to 9100, which I think is of more interest to me. So at this point, we are talking about 9070, are we not?
We are.
Okay.
Seeing no other lights, we're going to vote on the proposed amendment that would reduce the number for 9070, for requesting a meeting from three to two. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Nay. Opinion of the chair?
I'd go for division.
Okay. We are going to, a roll call. Let's show the hands. All in favor of the amendment, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, I see two. All opposed, signify by raising your hand. All right, we move on to the next. No, we don't. Member Johnston?
Sure. I would make another motion to delete, refer Minnesota statute 123 B.09 subdivision six, because that is, has absolutely nothing to do with this policy, nothing whatsoever.
I'm sorry, would you, you said that--
Delete the line that says, "N. Men. Statute 123 B.09 subdivision six." And the reason I'm asking for that deletion, first, let's see if there's a second.
Okay. It's been moved by Member Johnston, seconded by Member Waltie. Member Johnston?
Sure. I think that when we talk about policies here, I think that we should at least know what we're doing. And to have a Minnesota statute listed on a policy which is not even relevant to the policy is not good writing policies. And of course, that's why I objected both of these anyway, is that these things are being written. I think maybe Member Waltie has an interest. Nobody can answer here what the intent of these are. So my feeling is that these were slapped together. There was no good advice given. We did not have a discussion at the subcommittee meeting of any substance whatsoever. And again, again, it's poorly written. And when we write policies, it should be made so that at least follows a letter what's somewhat relevant. In this case, that line is erroneous.
Member Waltie? I don't particularly mind if the statute is referred here, because I don't think that the statute does what has been suggested, that it requires three people to call a special committee meeting. There's probably one good way of finding out, and that is to find out what the Minnesota School Boards Association's attorneys suggest. There are two or 300 school boards in the state of Minnesota that have policies, many of them that have been adopted, designed by the Minnesota School Boards Association. I don't think it would be much of, much skin off of anybody's nose if we waited until we got some confirmation that the language of the statute requires us to abide by the three people that they mention. Most school boards are composed, in the state of Minnesota, are composed of six or seven people. Duluth used to be an exception. I think Minneapolis and St. Paul are an exception. I would just simply point out that one of, in the spirit of parliamentary procedure, one of the, one of the, one of the primary driving forces behind parliamentary procedure is tolerance of the minority. And I see this setting up a situation in which a minority can be very easily discriminated. Since, since there are two people currently, I cannot help but feel personally singled out by this particular language at this particular time, no matter how much other people point to the statutory language.
Thank you, Member Johnston?
I don't know if I said, but I'd like to have a vote on both of these--
I'm sorry?
I'm pressing a vote for both of these items.
Separate what, for both items? I'm not sure what you mean by both items. Oh, right. Okay, so we're going to vote on the amendment right now. I guess not. Member Harla, let's see, who's up? Member Harla?
I'm just wondering if we, if Member, if Member Johnston could talk a little bit about the research you're doing with the Minnesota School Board Association, what the timeline is of that, if you could talk through when you emailed them, what they said that their timeline in response is, just so that, so we can understand.
Okay. Member Johnston?
Harla? Yeah, about a week ago, I sent this, sent a note asking, I was actually asking about 90, was it 71, whichever other one is, because it doesn't apply to this one anyway. But they haven't got back to me yet. And so I'm waiting for that. But I certainly think it would be prudent to, as a minimum, at least wait for what they respond.
Okay, we're voting on the amendment. If, I'm going to restate the amendment. This is an amendment proposed by Member Johnston, seconded by Member Waltie, that would delete the reference to Minnesota statute 123 B.09. All in favor of the amendment of deletion, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Nay. Nay. It is defeated. Okay, we move on to the next policy. Member Waltie?
I would like to move that for 9100 special meetings, that we go back to two people as the language that we will continue to have from here on out.
We're voting on the 9070 as is. Okay. All in favor of maintaining, I mean, of the policy of state and on page 61 for policy 9070, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're voting on 9070, page 61. Okay. Member Johnston?
I was going to say quickly, again, that Member Harla was, I think, has a good point, that I think we should get more information. And I would prefer to table this, but since apparently nobody wanted to second that, I guess at this point, I'd ask the board to vote no, until we can actually do some, some research like we should be doing.
Thank you. All in favor of the policy, signify, I can't keep up with the lights. Member Harla?
I know we've had a lot of discussion on this, and understand that there's, well, first of all, I know at the beginning, there's been a lot of relationship building within the board. And so to hear two versus five is, I mean, something that goes against a lot of other conversations that have happened beyond here. So that's an apparent thing. But I would actually, to be honest, I'd second the table to understand what MSBA is doing, just because I want to be fair to the board. But if they, if they come across that this is something that other boards are doing more in the state, then I would go with it.
I'm not sure, did you just--
I'll remake the motion to table.
Yeah, we have, it's, we're going to redo the motion to table then? Let's do that. All right, Member Johnston, please make the motion.
Just make a motion to table this.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Harla to table. All in favor of tabling, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Nay. Nay. Opinion of the board, the nays have it. Okay, we'll vote on the motion. We'll vote on the, on the policy 9070. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
I have that as a five to two.
Four to three.
Five to three, with Member Harla, four, three, not eight members, Members Harla, Members Johnston, and Member Waltie voting against. Okay. I have to see who signed up for this one. Member Johnston, policy 9100.
I guess the discussion is pretty much the same. This is actually even more important. It's the way our bylaws say, so people know is that currently we can, two members can call a special meeting. And right now, that's the way it is. I can't recall it's ever been used before. This change is going to change that to three. There's some good things in there about changing the dates. I certainly don't mind the date sent to me. That would be something that I would certainly be in favor of, if we could get some clarification on about the three. Actually, there isn't anything about clarification on date. That was the other one, looking at it here. So at this point, again, my informal opinion here at this point indicates that law can, law is, law is limits and gives rights to people, whether it be the school board members or the general public. And you can, you can deny people's rights, and you can, you can't go beyond what the law says is taking away people's rights. But if any kind of a local government wants to give people more rights, that's, you know, then that's, I think, Member Waltie mentioned that earlier, that this is not a question of complying with the law. The law I'm asking for, MSBA, their informal opinion, they, of course, they don't have formal opinion, they're not lawyers. But, and again, I would ask again that this would not be good. And of course, I would ask again what the intent of this is, and why this would be coming up now, particularly after I've asked for several agenda items, and they are not even being put on.
Again, three members requesting a meeting is still a minority. And this is a recommendation by Minnesota State School Boards Association, and it's Minnesota statute. We're going to go on, Member Waltie?
No, this is not necessarily the recommendation of the Minnesota School Board Association. It is state statute that we appear to be abiding by. We do spend a lot of money, being a member of the Minnesota School Board Association. All of us went to the MSBA conference. As I've said, parliamentary procedure generally encourages all boards to show a certain amount of tolerance towards a minority. I would say that perhaps the best evidence that seems to be developing, that seems to argue that my assumption, or my intuition, that this is directed at a minority by a hostile majority, is that there is an unwillingness by this board to have consultation offered to us by the MSBA. I will readily say that if we are told by the MSBA, MSBA, that indeed, we should abide by three people, as is indicated by the statute, I would go along with that. But I would like to hear the association that we all belong to give us their opinion about the intent of the statute before we act too hastily.
Thank you, Member Waltie. Member Johnston?
I guess I'd like to echo Member Harla. I'm sorry if I'm quoting you here, but I think, I think it's important that we are trying to get along as a board. Member Waltie has certainly indicated that he looks at this as a way to not get along. I think this is, changing this is not going to do, it's not going to change the way we do business, whether or not we change it to, if we leave it, I mean, it's not going to change anything if it's left the way it is. Hasn't hurt us in the past. And certainly, until, I would certainly also go along with what MSBA says, that I would go along with that as well. But more important is that we have a little bit of local control here. And I do have to clarify, I think somebody said that this was an MSBA recommendation. No, it wasn't an MSBA recommendation. But as I wish somebody would give me some documentation. Is there some documentation that MSBA is, I'm wasting my time, or was that just a misnomer there? It's the point of information. Somebody said MSBA recommended this. Was that not correct? No, it wasn't correct. Okay. Again--
I apologize, and now when I thought I had misread it.
Okay. I guess, I guess I will make a motion to table this, and I guess, again--
Is there a second? Seconded by Member Waltie. All in favor of tabling this, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Nay. Opinion of the board, the nays have it. It's a four to three vote. Okay, now we vote on the policy 9100 as a whole. All in favor of adopting policy 9100, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Four to three, with Harla, Johnston, and Waltie. Okay. We're done with the policies. We go to Mr. Westholm and the Wadham report. It's on page 35.
I'm on the page now. I just had a couple of questions for Mr. Hanson. And I think I know the answers, but I'll let him tell me whether I'm thinking right or not. What I'm looking at is the projected total Wadham down on the bottom of that page. And it says the projected was 9877, and then the budgeted was 9669. That's typical, I guess, probably budget, a little blow what we're projecting. And then the final for 2013, is that what we think it's going to be now, 19, 9812?
That is last year's actual Wadham number, so from a year ago. What we're projecting again here is this current year, ending next month, in fact.
Yeah, okay. So it's like, probably an additional 30 kids than what we budgeted for, correct, roughly?
It's just about nine more Waddams, 9677 versus 9669.
Okay, no, I was looking at, at the final, and I thought that was maybe a projected final for this year.
final for this year, but, okay, so it's only eight, eight members that were any budgeting on, so I guess there's, you know, there's no, I thought, I thought it was going to be like thirty more than we projected, then that might amount in a significant amount of money, would that help with layoffs and everything if we truly thought that's what we were going to have? But apparently that's not the case, so I'm done talking about it.
Thank you, Members Siligapunko.
Thanks, Chairman Nicky. Just a quick thing when it relates to this, I know I've mentioned this before, but I love to read in the News Tribune, every day they have different twenty and forty years ago. And today, there was something about twenty years ago, how, you know, because we've talked about how we've been losing population, our enrollment has going, has been going down. Well, twenty years ago, and you can all read it in today's paper, they were talking about how the population has gone down, it was for two of our high schools, Central and Denfeld, so much so that they had to move down a class for sports. So, I mean, this trend has been going on, I know we've had a huge discussion on Waddhams for the last, since I've been on the board, and I know boards previously have too, and it just shows, we've been losing population for twenty-five, thirty years, and so I just wanted to point that out when it relates to this report. Thank you.
Member Johnston?
Sure, I wasn't going to say anything about this since the last time we did the committee meeting, it turned out to be a very unpleasant discussion. But when things are being said that are inaccurate or very misleading, I think it's very important to make that correction. One of the statements that was made earlier was that projections are very accurate. Okay, I guess as Mr. Westholm just indicated, two, that's, Adolf is probably pretty accurate, but that's a pretty, that's a pretty dismal projection. We, again, this is, this is the lowest number of students we've ever had in Duluth since, who knows when, probably eighteen eighty, probably close to a hundred, probably over a hundred years. And as I sent out to the board, very clear information that, about the census, about population, about how neighboring schools have not lost population near as much as we have, talked about how the state of Minnesota has not lost population and students has been often claimed, just very important to have some of this information clarified when people say things that are wrong, that's really should not be, we shouldn't be making decisions if something is wrong. I do have, I'll hold that for now, but I do have a question, maybe the superintendent can ask, is that, I've had, again, there've been a lot of people talking about what, about Denfeld and whatnot, and I have asked in the past on this one to get a breakdown on schools and we never get that breakdown. I've also asked for a breakdown on budget on schools, which all has to go with the number of students we have. Now, I made that request over a year ago about what the schools got, when we have people talking, obviously, there's all angst in the community about what is going on, particularly the disparity between Denfeld and East. The Denfeld, the console that I go to as often as I can, that's been a concern of theirs ever since I've been going to that. And now it's kind of coming to head, was obviously in the paper, and I guess, could I get some of that information so we can find out some more data on where the students are going? I'd like to get the actual real numbers and I would like to get budget stuff as well. Can I get that on the?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I'm just-
We have one second, Member, this, this has been covered a number of times, you know, there, there are reasons, I'd like the superintendent to explain again why.
Why what?
Why, you know, about the breakdown, wasn't it, it's-
Where the kids are going? He did it last week after this meeting.
Could you, you had talked about a couple of different things, you were talking about a breakdown of numbers, but then you talked about a breakdown of budget, which, could you clarify?
You don't have the numbers on the budget, you don't have either of these budgets, this is a simple request and I've done this in the past, and nobody haven't talked about it in the past, I'd like to, like to really know when people talk about Denfeld has nine-hundred and whatever it was, eighty-six, I mean, you know, I thought it was eleven-hundred, I mean, some of these numbers that people are talking about, could we get that information? Because we're going to be making some of these discussions, I think certainly the people would like to know, certainly the Denfeld people would like to know, Denfeld parents would like to know, just asking if I could get that.
So you're talking about enrollment numbers, not Waddhams? Because these are Waddhams, not enrollment numbers.
I would prefer the actual enrollment numbers.
Let me, let me, if you, I'd like to keep this in some order. Member Harla, you're, are you ready to answer, Member Johnston, on this one, or should we move on to Member Harla?
I was just going to clarify the difference between enrollment numbers and Wadham numbers. Enrollment numbers counts noses, if you will, how many students go there, but does not take into consideration if those students are part-time or half-time or more than full-time and what level they are in, determines what they're multiplied by to get that Wadham report. So, there is a difference if you want Waddhams or enrollments.
Member Harla, you're next.
I just want to thank the superintendent for the information he gave at the Think Kids meetings, that gave the breakdown of each of the elementary schools and then he would walk through the middle, middle and the high schools, so I think that's a number that can be sent out, so I appreciate, appreciate that number being sent out. I just want to be careful about how we talk about accuracies in our populations. With all of the work that, with the work that I do, I hear across the region, across the state, that we do have a declining trend, a declining number of kids being born, families are not, we don't have five or six kids per family, there's quite a large number of people that are having children these days. And so I just want to be clear that, that continually this, we focus on this specific Wadham number and I want to come back to what the comment I made last week about coming up with how we begin to better build relationship with the community with accurate and positive and inviting information.
Member Johnston?
Yeah, I mean, I actually want that too, I mean, I've done my best attempt to send numbers to this board about the trends that seem to be contrary to what some people are saying. If you've got numbers, if you've got any information that says that my numbers are wrong, please, that's why I'm pulling it out for, for discussions. If you think my numbers are wrong, please show me my numbers that are wrong. I know I'm getting all the numbers from MDE and if, you know, those that anybody can get, and, you know, I just, I sent you what I had, if somebody can show that the MD numbers are incorrect, I mean, go for it. You know, all I want is a discussion and, 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 you know, I'd be glad to be proven wrong, I'd hope that I would be proven wrong and that our schools are doing as well as the other neighboring schools in the state, but at this point, I don't have any evidence to indicate that.
Superintendent Cranseth?
I just wanted to remind the board of the information that I sent. It was information that came from the city of Duluth when they did their study on housing that showed that while the population of Duluth dropped, the number of households went up and I thought that was a, an interesting turn of events. And just to use that as a resource as you're having discussions, I know that there have been a lot of discussions about housing in the city and the lack of housing. And so it just correlated with some of the discussions we were having and wanted to share that information with you and I think that's how this discussion got started.
Member Welty?
We're running rather far afield of Waddhams here, but what I, I heard that I agreed with, with Member Johnston especially, again, in light of all the testimony we got tonight, is the course offerings available at our two high schools, because apparently it's not just English and it's not just, or it's not just, not just German five, Spanish five that are under threat, but rather a larger portion of Denfeld's curriculum and apparently some of East's curriculum. So I would certainly welcome information about the course offerings available to schools and projections about how we initially plan to meet the needs of our kids curriculum-wise and course offering-wise in the future and maybe that will lead us into the discussion I suggested earlier in the meeting.
Member Westholm?
Yeah, talking about enrollment stuff, I spent a couple of years, my last couple of years, really, one of my jobs was to monitor all the schools' enrollment and so I kind of got used to looking at this stuff. One of the things I do remember based on some studies done by some people we hired from outside and other things, is we figured, I believe, that this year was in fact going to be the bottom. And we knew a bottom was coming and we knew the bottom was going to be somewhere around this number. And now the projection is that now, maybe in, either in a year or two, and maybe even next year, I don't know if it'd be next year, our enrollment is starting to go up. And we see this with our kindergartens, which have started to get bigger for the past two years. So it, it should be no surprise to anybody that we've bottomed out this year and I think we've bottomed out. Now, maybe next year will be the same or a little bit smaller, but I think, again, we're at the bottom of this enrollment dip and we should start seeing some increases in enrollment just based on the number of kids there are and what's coming up. And there's a lot of people that spend a fair amount of time in trying to figure out how many babies are born and how many three-year-olds and four-year-olds there are and start to use that number to project how many kindergarteners we're going to have and so I think, I'm not surprised by the fact that the number is low again this year, but I think it's going to start turning around quite soon.
We had an extensive discussion on this during the business report and I'd like to echo what Mr. Westholm just said. I tend to be an optimist, I, I see this as a positive, I don't see this as a negative, I see a turnaround, I see, I mean, some say, oh, it's only nine students, but it's nine more. And we don't know, none of us here, know what we're going to have at this time next year. Some of us can think it's going to be awful, some of us can think it's going to be better. So, Mr. Westholm mentioned bottoming out, let's, in my opinion, I hope that's what we've done. I look at, I turn around and I'm, I'm optimistic. Member Laffler Kemp?
Yeah, you kind of mentioned this already and I, I don't know, tonight, I feel like I'm wanting to make sure the students and people in the audience that are here are aware that we spend, spent a great deal of time at the business committee meeting on talking about Waddhams and talking about enrollment and so we have spent a great deal of time, frankly, almost every month on that, but particularly this month and I guess I just want to make sure you're aware of that.
Thank you, Member Johnston?
We'll have to correct one of the members, all we have to do is look at our review on comment and that was that we were supposed to have been bottomed out two years ago, it was going to be seven hundred higher than it is now, so that stuff is incorrect, those statements that say that this was, this was predicted, no, it was not predicted, we're below that. And, and just to remind everybody that our financial projection was based on eighty-one-hundred students, at least the one, the thing we had flashed above on our board about where our expected thirteen million dollar deficit is going to be. So it isn't just a projection, you know, obviously it's, this is, this is serious stuff and of course, if I think if we're down to eighty-one-hundred students, I think that we have failed as a board and an administration if that happens. I do want to end up on a, a little bit different topic, but I know the discussion was a very difficult discussion on the committee meeting, most of that was, was spent bashing me. And I happen to have the recording, if anybody doesn't believe that, so, but I think an important thing was, the member Harla said, is what, what do we, I think rightfully so, she said, well, I bring up this stuff, which doesn't seem to be quite so rosy, so what, what do I have to answer? I'd like to say something I have to answer here and I think this is a very important thing, it's absolutely critical. My goal was that we have nine thousand students, here's absolutely critical that we bring students back, I mean, it's the number one thing that we should be doing. And one way to do that is that we, as a board, getting along, sorry to be touchy-feely here, but I think when, when what's just happened about people passing resolutions, I clearly seem to be ostracizing some of the, the board members for no reason at all. When I haven't got an agenda item on for the last four years, when I have to get Data Practices Act requests, I have to go down to the Department of Administration to get those answered for the last four years, I think that-
Member Johnston, could we stick, yes, you have the floor, and I'm also the chair, could we stick to the Wadham projections, please?
Oh, yeah, I was recording-
There's room at the end of the meeting, room at the end of the meeting for your further comments, but we're working on a Wadham request-
If you want to do Waddhams.
Yeah, well, I think what we're doing now is following policy, we're talking about the Wadham projections and you have room at the end of the meeting to discuss, so back to you.
Sure, I mean, the Waddhams, we have to talk about why the Waddhams are going down. When Waddhams, we go down is that we as a board are dysfunctional, the, I think the administration is dysfunctional and I'm proposing that we do something better about that and, and I'll-
Thank you. I want to say something right now that I know will cause yet another comment, but as I recall that business meeting, we did not spend it bashing Member Johnston. He one time, he mentioned during the meeting about ignoring something, you're going to ignore the problem and I said, we're not ignoring it, we're trying to have a discussion at the business meeting. Now, if you disagree with me, Member Johnston, I don't take it as you're bashing me. And if I disagree with you at a meeting, I don't take it as bashing you and I would like to hear that recording where, I, I guess I want to hear where I bashed you in any way, other than disagreeing with you, which we have a right to do and that, I don't recall, I guess I just don't recall. Member Johnston?
Let me get quick, you know, appreciate that, no, I wasn't referring to you, it was one of the other members that went on and on and on, anybody that was there that knows who that was. And again, I'm asking here that, I wish that some of the board would ask their other board members to try to be more civil and be less personal and I apologize, Mr. Chairman, if I was not referring to you.
I apologize.
And, and I-
The apology is mine.
Right, and that wasn't what I was doing, but I think as a board, we should be getting along better, we should be trying to police our own members when somebody wants to say something, I wasn't being personal and when I talk about Wadham numbers, it's not a personal thing, it's just a point of information.
Thank you, and again, I apologize. Member Laffler Kemp?
Yeah, I just want to apologize to our administrative staff for the comment that was just made saying you're dysfunctional. I, I personally am really offended by that, but also I just want to apologize. As a new board member, I have greatly appreciated the information you have shared when I've called to help me prepare for meetings, when I had questions, and I know that's shared by many of us as board members, particularly new board members and so again, I just apologize for that statement. Thank you.
Thank you, we'll move on to two B one, Member Johnston?
Well, just, I just had an information question on it and says they will receive a standard commission, just curious what that commission is or negotiated lump sum, what's that expected to be?
Mr. Hanson?
I don't, this is more in Mr. Lighters' Bealy Wick and he could probably tell you the number off the top of his head, but I'm not able to do that, so I'll have to get back to board members with that information.
Thank you. Member Harla?
Can I just note that Mr. Lighter let the committee know last week that he was not available to be here for comments this week, so I just wanted to thank you for letting us know that, so just publicly that he's, he let us know that he wasn't able to be here.
Thank you. We go to four E one, Member Siligapunko.
Okay. Oh, thank you. I just had a quick question about this with regard to when the school resource officers are in the schools, I know it says something about ninety percent of the time they'll be there, is there ever a time that, say, they can't be there, like on vacation or something, that we have subs? Or do we not end up having a school resource officer at the time, like if they- Or do we not end up having a school resource officer at the time, like if they take vacation at all during the school year?
Is that Mr. Hanson? Or is it?
I can-
Okay, let's go Superintendent Grandseth.
It really is an individual basis and depending on how long it is, I know that if it's medical leave for an extended period of time, they have brought people in. Otherwise, they make arrangements with fellow officers and they would call either another officer or call 911 if there was an issue and the resource officer was not there.
Thank you. Member Westrom.
The other situation that I can recall where our officers were not in the building sometimes is when there was something fairly serious happening downtown, they would call the resource officers downtown. But they would always let us know when that happened. And that maybe happened if once or twice a year that was, that was exceptional, so.
Thank you. Member Harla.
I had a, actually, this week, a police officer, I was at the Myers-Bilkens Bike Rodeo. So there's a, the bike, there's two police officers that ride bicycles and they, I know they do a lot of responding to our, the campus, our ALC. Do they, do we have any contract with the city to support that time or do we have to pay on an individual basis for that, for their time?
I guess we can, I think that's out of order right now.
Oh, sorry.
We're talking about the school resources officers at middle and high schools?
I'm asking, does the, does this high school that's in this building have a school resource officer as well too? Because I, no, it's a population that doesn't always traditionally have as strong a relationship with the police. So just wondering what our relationship is with this campus and our police.
Thank you. Superintendent Grandseth.
We do not have a specific officer assigned to this building.
Okay.
So when there are issues that require police assistance, we either contact one of the other resource officers or call 911.
Thank you. We move to six A, member Siligapunko.
Just one more quick question on the expenditure contract. I didn't see a contract for it. It was this contract extension and maybe, Mr. Hanson, you could, that Avalon Educational Institute, it said contract extension, but there was nothing in our thing about it, in our packet. So I'm just curious what it is for two thousand dollars. It's on page seventy-five.
Have you been stealing one?
I probably should have asked you-
For which one are you asking?
This one.
Members Siligapunko and board members, the item that you're referring to is, the support for it is on page ninety.
How did I miss that?
And it was a request to increase the not-to-exceed amount within that existing contract from the original amount that was signed of two thousand dollars for an additional two thousand, four thousand, to a total of four thousand dollars. And the services were consistent with those outlined in the original contract and, and the rates, all the rates were the same as well. And so this is what Mr. Howe has presented with me, to me, and I approved it given that information.
Thank you. We now move on to approval of the business committee report. Moved by member Loffler Kemp and seconded by member Harla. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed?
No.
No? It's a six to one with member Johnston voting against. Special resolutions? There are no special resolutions. We now move into questions. Member Johnston, questions or other?
Just some comments. Again, the people that spoke today and the Denfeld thing, obviously, I've been getting a lot of concerns as everybody has. And I really think that we as a board, as administration, really have to, you know, I would suggest that we have as a committee, the whole meeting on that. I would suggest that we invite members of the community to come and talk to us about that, just because it is so important. I think this is, to me, this is probably the most important issue that we have facing us right now, is the disparity between East and Denfeld. And I really would like to hear feedback from the teachers and of course, the students as well and certainly the parents. And I really, you know, so I guess I'm asking that that be done, you know, when we can. I know we're all busy, but I just think there's something here that the people have spoken, we really have to respond and listen to them and see, find out, and put our heads together and try to, try to do something about it.
Thank you. Last night at the Students for the Future meeting, I thought I saw a prototype of what we can do, what Mr. Member Johnston was talking about. And one of the suggestions was to combine different groups, the Pyramid at Denfeld, the Student Forum at East, the Students for the Future, which is a multi-school organization, and other groups, orchestra officers and drama club officers and have a dialogue, including the superintendent and any members of the board that go. And I think that would go a long way in making, making the students feel that they have a voice. Member Welty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have been greatly frustrated by what I consider an absence of financial information as we've made a number of very important decisions. I've met that complaint public several times. I would like to thank Mr. Hanson, who sent me an email offering to sit down and talk about the budget with me, some of the questions that I have. I do think that we as a school board desperately to have a discussion of the finances. At our very first meeting, a document which we really didn't get in paper for about six or seven weeks, was briefly flashed up on a screen and it caught my attention and I commented on it at that meeting and we really had no discussion of it except in a very cursory fashion. I'm taking a look at it now. If any of you have not taken a close look at it, I will just simply point out that at the bottom it talks about SOD. That is a word I remember very well because when I first began being interested in being on the school board, our school district was in SOD, statutory operating debt, meaning we were bankrupt. And I do recall, and as an old A D, Mr. Murnicki, you will probably remember this very well, our school board at that time, when we got into statutory operating debt, decided that the way to solve our fiscal problem was to eliminate all extracurriculars. And I just saw the throat-slitting gesture there, so-
No, no, that, I meant, that's what, eliminating, that's why I was agreeing with you.
Yes, that's right. No, 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 no. I, that's, I, yes, I noted that, yes. So you do recall that.
Oh, yes.
It happened that we did not end up killing all of the extracurriculars because the community rose up to fund this on their own. But the document that we were given shows that in the school year twenty seventeen, eighteen, it is projected that we will have a debt of three point ninety-three million dollars. And the following year, no, it will be a deficit of, that's in dark here, it's very hard to see this, about three point nine million. And it's going to be about thirteen point seven million the year following. That is a lot of debt. Now, I know that the superintendent described this as being a worst-case scenario, but there's a worser case that has developed since the contract that we accepted. So I'm guessing that the statutory operating debt that we'll be looking at in four years' time, when, by the way, I run for reelection, I might run for reelection, is likely to be closer to between, well, somewhere between fifteen and sixteen million dollars. I know that school boards can act in a crisis mode and I have no doubt that the people in Denfeld would look forward to our funding, all of the things that they wish. That requires money. But as I do my division, something I was never very good at in, in the fourth grade when I first learned long division, I see a figure of close to sixteen million dollars in deficit and it seems to me that we would almost have to be cutting about four million dollars a year to avoid statutory operating debt. I'm looking forward to my conversations with Mr. Hanson. Perhaps I'm being a little bit too crisis-oriented in mentioning this, but I will say that the fact that we've known this for three or four or five months, made huge financial decisions and not discussed this as a board, does not do anything to give me the kind of comfort I need. So if this board wants to allay my fears, let us have a discussion and find out what we can do to make sure this worser-case scenario that I'm outlining doesn't take place.
Thank you, member Welty. I'm gonna have Superintendent Grandseth respond, but I'd like to say, I've, we've had discussions. We've had discussions in this room, we've had discussions in the back room. We've also talked about numbers that have been built in, in our projections that we can't add on to. If it's built into the projection, then you can't further add on, well, then this is going to increase it. We've had that discussion. And we've talked about worst-case scenario, which is something you have to do assuming no funds from the state, assuming this, assuming that. And I guess I respectfully disagree with you and say that we've, as a board, we've had discussion. Superintendent Grandseth.
First of all, when you said you haven't received any information regarding finances, I believe you had a request for eight-year history of all of our budgets and the documentation for that and received that and have also had private meetings with Mr. Hanson, Mr. La, La Bla, already to discuss some of those. So I, you know, I think that you have received information when, when requested and so I just wanted to point that out. And I just wanted to say, again, I know we've had this discussion a few times already about the projections and the, the projections that you're talking about from the committee of the whole. And again, I'll say that those were, there's assumptions built into there. One, that there are no increases because we, we don't have a crystal ball of what the legislature will do, so we can't assume any increases. It also assumes that we don't make adjustments as we go. So let's say that there was a projected decrease in population, which for the next year or two, there continues to be a slight decrease in our population, projected. It assumes that we don't adjust for that. So what that's doing is multiplying over time in that scenario. And also, the projections include assumed increases. So some of the things that you're adding on to make that number worser, in your words, are already in that projection. So I think that it is a good idea to meet with Mr. Hanson and get that cleared up for you.
Thank you, member Siligapunko.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for superintendent. Just when we had all of the speakers and some of the things that I've had concerns about, you know, and we've brought this up too, with, with some of the classes that don't have that many kids. What about Skype? So I do want you to answer about that, I mean, looking at, at that, because I think it'd be a way to keep some of our classes. Also, it was mentioned that East has lost more classes than Denfeld and I'm curious, you know, we heard a list of Denfeld ones and I'm wondering which are, are being lost at East, if there's more? And maybe there's a way that, you know, with Skype or whatever we do, we could keep all the classes at both schools. I mean, I'm just throwing it out there, it might not be possible. And I know that we've had some issues, so that's, those are a couple of different issues. We've also had some issues with transfers. And a lot of times, transfers are denied, but then they're appealed and then they're approved and that's creating some changes in numbers that maybe, so I don't know who's on the appeal committee, but somehow they're allowing some of that. And so that, that might be something to look at, you know, transfers might need to be looked at. And the other thing that, of course, is really, I'm very concerned about, and that's the music programs. And huge article that the News Tribune did, but also an editorial today that was right on and talked about achievement gap and how students that might be in poverty, you know, maybe the reduced lunch area, but they have a hard time paying for private lessons. If we're not providing some of the music programs, whether it's instrumental or whatever, if we're not providing it, where are these students going to be able to get that capability? So, you know, you guys all know how I feel about music and I am, have been very upset and I know, I'm glad we're putting some back, but we're still not putting enough back to invest. And, and I do worry about by the time, in the next few years, that we won't even have orchestra anymore. I do worry about that. So I would like to see us put a little bit more investment just to help bring it back up and have a full-time band director at Denfeld. You know, that's just one example. So that's another thing, I'd like music and the arts to be used as addressing the achievement gap because it really is an intervention all itself. It really is. And then the last thing I want you to bring up, superintendent, is I know we are receiving a little bit more funding from the state. And if you could address that. Thank you.
You don't want all of these questions answered? Okay, good. I'm getting, okay, God, yes. Superintendent Grandseth, the last question, please. You're ready, don't, you're, you're on.
The, well, the question, did you hear what you-
Well, state funding.
State funding.
Oh, oh, sorry. I was just writing something else to myself here. We, the legislature did make some changes, some of the categories, there were several categories that funding was changed in, some of it in response to the safe students legislation, some of it in response to teacher evaluation, the teacher pension fund. There were several different categories. Some of it was additional per pupil funding and we are working now with the state to get the exact figures on what all of that means with our wadums and our enrollments. And so we should be able to bring firmer numbers to you for next month's meeting.
And do you want to comment about possible use of Skype?
Skype is one tool that you could use. There are several others. There's, because we're a Google-based district, there's Google Hangouts, there's other programs that may use, may be more effective and efficient than Skype. We have, in the past, tried that with some limited success because being in a class over Skype is different than being in a class. There are other ways that we offer courses, though. We do offer some of them online, so that could be an option for some students. And as much as I would rather students didn't, there are also PSEO options for students who are looking to take a college course that we're not able to offer. I do wanna, if I may-
You may.
Staffing is always difficult. I know that our high school administrators and our middle school administrators spend hours and hours and hours and hours developing master schedules. Trying to get over a thousand or around a thousand kids into six different classes during a day, all of whom have different requests, is very difficult. And when you have students who have, like, I can't remember, she said twelve different classes that she was choosing and hopefully, six of them end up being the classes that they select. Whenever we run a class that is below the average class size, let's say we run a class of twenty-two, that would be- of 22, that would be below the class size. Somewhere in the system, there's a class that's larger than the average, to make up for that class, that's smaller than the average, because at the end of the day, there's only so much money for our classes. I know that every year, there are classes that we don't run. There have been, for as long as I can remember, there's some classes that don't get run every year because of lack of interest. And so we really do try to offer our students as much as we possibly can. At the end of the day, the budget is the budget. So if we are going to add a section of something, we're either going to exceed our budget, or we're going to have to make a reduction in another area. So it's, it's not as easy as saying, let's run the, and I, I can't really give you a list of classes that aren't going to run right now, because as I've said a few times, we're, we're in the middle of this process. We do have some FTE left to address some hotspot issues, but it is also May. We have a long ways before school begins, and our numbers change over the summer as well. We will continue to look at our numbers, we'll continue to address issues as best that we can, within the resources that we have to do it.
Thank you, Members, Superintendent Grandseth. You do remind me of a time that a principal walked in and asked me about taking overloads, and I do remember teaching five sections of 34 and 35 students, and if you look at that, it was almost 25 students over what should have been carried and not allowed, and I'm patting myself on the back here, but that did allow some lower classes sizes in other areas, just what you're saying. Mr. Tremble, you've been waiting patiently, and we, we really look forward to hearing from both you and Mr. Manning, so Mr. Tremble?
Thank you. When I was in eighth grade, and a lot of people were in eighth grade, I know that I took Spanish one, and some people took German one, intending that when they were senior in high school, that they'd be able to take the language five and get a college, college credit for it. And when I found out that, for the, or when I heard for the first time that Spanish one wasn't going to be offered for next year, I was upset, and now that here that it'll, are basically gonna be confirmed that it will be here for next year, I am thankful and happy, but, excuse me, but there's like, still, German, four kids right now who want to take German five next year, who don't have the option, and even though they've put in just as much work as Spanish kids. Sorry, I still have a bit of a cold from, having a bit of trouble talking, but, and for classes like April old history, I tried to take April old history this year, but because of schedule conflicts, it didn't really work out, which was understandable, but you, obviously, the students really care about topics like these, that's why they would turn out the way, and how many kids came to talk and speak their opinions, so the students are open and willing for, to do just about anything to try to preserve the curriculum and, you know.
Thank you, Welseth. And again, we appreciate your input. Member Laffler Kemp.
I can't remember, no. Um, it's, okay, um, thank you again, Mr. Tremble, and it, it was great to have, again, the students coming out tonight, and also, you know, getting a, a number of emails, and when I've been out in the community, hearing concerns about a number of issues. And I look forward to us having a discussion on music and language as we move forward with our, our budget discussions. And thank you for answering that question about the state funding, that was one of my, my questions. I, I think just, a couple of things I just wanted to state is, it's been mentioned a few different times about the Think Kids meetings, and, and what an opportunity that was for us as a school district to provide accurate information to the community on enrollment, on boundaries, on school finances, and, and to talk about the levy. And I, we were recognized for that work that we did, and I, I just wanted to acknowledge that, that we as a district were recognized for our Think Kids meetings. Last night, when I and Chair Murneke were at the Students for the Future meeting, references to having discussions along the line of the Think Kids, on the Safe Schools build came up a lot, and really appreciated hearing the, the creative ideas that students had on that and many other issues last night. So I just wanted to kind of tie that in, to us being recognized again as a school district for that process we brought the community through for the second year. And then just the last thing I, I wanted to say is, you know, we spend a lot of time, and again, for, for the, the students who are still here, following our agenda as school board members at these meetings, but as school board members, we also have a lot of different opportunities to not only hear from students and parents and community members at the mic, but also by just being out in the community at, at a variety of different things. And I know each of us probably could go around and list three to 10 events that we, we've been at. And even though I'm just a district, East End School Board member, I do also try and get out to the schools across the district, you know, this month, Laurel MacArthur and Denfeld a few times. And so I just, I guess I share that with you, that there's lots of ways we as school board members gather information. We appreciate getting the emails and the letters, and, and that gives us a lot of food for thought. And, and just like you're giving us information, we do, hopefully, all of us as school board members are giving you accurate information. And, and then I'll just tie it up with, in June, I asked, as well as Member Harla, that we bring in the reaffirmation of the civility, the nine tools for civility. It was last reaffirmed in June 2010, so we'll be doing it in June again. And I hope that, like the Students for the Future last night, they modeled wonderful civility, and I hope that we can also reaffirm the, the nine tools of civility that our community and our school board has adopted. And the last thing I just want to do, a plug, I serve on the Head Start Policy Committee, and this is the 50th anniversary of Head Start, and we, we talked earlier about the Head Start grant for the district, they're having a celebration on, on May 29th, and serving on that committee, I, I can only stress, we have some excellent education going on with our, our younger students. I, I've had the opportunity to do staff trainings, we have some incredible staff through Head Start, and so I just wanted to do a plug for, for them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Laffler Kemp. Katie Coffin, and a number of us will be working on a, on a talk about the, the award we received, and, and we're gonna hopefully have a little bit of a to-do about it. Member Johnston.
I just want to kind of tie up the whole Denfeld thing and the discussion. Talked a lot about Denfeld today, and I know we have at least two grads here from Denfeld, me, three, uh, excuse me, Mr. Superintendent. Unfortunately, I'm not, but I do represent the West District. And when I hear kind of despairing remarks said by people, and, or by passing on what they hear, that some people don't want to send their kids to Denfeld, that's very painful for me to hear. Denfeld has a very noble history, very proud history, we have a lot of endowments, I think we have a history of probably the longest history of really serving the students and the community, and it's just absolutely imperative that we do not let that slide, and I, I feel that it is. I know, I've talked about this before, but I really do want, and we can have some committee of the whole, I guess I would ask, at least to be part of that, that agenda setting, and, but I really would like, again, been requested the superintendent here, but I would really like to know what's caused Denfeld to go down to 986 and East at, whatever it is, 1550. I mean, I really want to know, the community wants to know, and we have to know because it isn't acceptable. And, and as you said earlier, Superintendent, is deep discussions are needed. Very wise, and the deep discussions, if it's formed with Member Welty or myself, I think we're all in this together, and I think that we want to have these, these discussions as well. So I'm looking forward to that, and in particular, to find out what's, why we got 986 kids at Denfeld.
Thank you, Member Johnston. Member Harla.
Thank you very much, Chair. Um, I just, so just to students out there, I graduated from Central, and I, when I graduated from Central, there were so many rumors that, I, I remember one day where there was a rumor of a gun at the school, and it made it to the media, and I remember my friends from, from East reporting a gun actually being there, and it didn't make the news. And so it's this public perception of East versus West, or Central versus, it's all these things that the rumors just start to continue to devise us versus bringing us together. So I stand with you in understanding how it feels to go to a school that you're so proud of, and for people to just call it something that it's not. But I've spent time at both of the schools, and I'm very proud of this, at all of the schools, and just very proud of the schools that we have in our district. Just want to say thank you for coming out for that tonight. And I'd say that this East versus West thing is not a school district issue alone, and I feel like we often operate within a silo, and people come at us and say, this is a school district, just district issue, but it's a community issue. And I'd, I'd refer back to the leadership that Mayor Ness has in moving toward the St. Louis River Corridor, and I know that we have not yet had an opportunity to meet with the city council as a whole, to do a city council school board meeting, and would just hope that, that members that are on the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee could have a conversation about that, so that, that the district can be informed on the mayor's plans, and the mayor and the, and his administration's plans, and then we as a, as a board can continue encouraging leadership that our whole community has so much to offer. And I, I, I live in the Hillside now, I'm very proud to live in the Hillside, and will continue to live in the Hillside, I've spent a lot of time in Denfeld, love door knocking all across the city as an at-large member that, that actually, I represent all of Duluth and the surrounding townships, and every neighborhood has issues, every neighborhood, but every neighborhood has people in it. And we start talking about all these lines, and we forget that it's people, just so we forget that it's kids. So I just say, I hope that we're able to meet that. And then also, recently was a, listened to a TED Talk about trust versus suspicion. And I'm, I'm offended by, by comments that of, of not getting along or that our administration is, is effective. I want to find a way that we can start filling the gap with trust versus filling the gap with, with suspicion, and want to thank the service. I know that we all do a ton, everyone's meeting 10 hours here on, on email or this, I just want to say that let's start beginning to fill the gap with trust this month.
Thank you, Member Harla. I'd really like to wrap up, and I'm hoping there aren't any more comments. There's two things I would like to say, prior to this meeting, I always come early, and I did talk to the superintendent, that's pretty much what Member Johnston mentioned, is we, we need a study, I know the Transportation Department out where I used to live, Ken Wilms, and I think it could provide a, a good idea of where our students live, because where I grew up, where Mr. Reston and I grew up, we used to have, what would it be, built, 20 of our friends all lived within a couple of blocks of us. And we all, I mean, and, and if you went into that neighborhood now, there might be only two students. So what happened in that area that once had 20 students in our classes, that, that are now two? We, we need to look at where the students live, and I think as a board, we'll pursue that. And finally, on a positive note, I'd like to thank the Goldfine family for what they do for the Goldfine Award. We take six teachers, and we have a little presentation of what they've done for the district, and all six of them are deserving of, of our honor and of our, of our, of our great gratitude. These six people are phenomenal, and especially want to congratulate Phil Ranala, he runs a program out of Denfeld that is superb, and the, the reports from the various people, Principal Skineers and Principal Jim Art, they, they lauded Mr. Ranala and read, read letters from his students about what a wonderful person he is, and what a wonderful program he has out there. And so we as a board want to congratulate all six members, and especially Mr. Ranala for his award. Are you, no, okay, we are adjourned. Thank you all.